Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Hari Krishna
Gopi jana balla bhav Gopi jana balla bhav Jaya Radha Mahatava Punja bihare Gopi jana balla bhav Ja sho dhanam dana Brojo janaram Ja sho dhanam dana Brojo janaram Jamo na tira bolochar Jamo na tira bolochar Jaya Radha Mahatava Punja bihare Gopi jana balla bhav Jaya Radha Mahatava Punja bihare Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna devotees, we welcome everyone for this weekly Thursday session of Shaila Guru Maharaj. We are hearing the series of Varg Samhita. Today is the 13th part of the series. So devotees can hear it attentively and at the end there will be session. So this lecture will be of 34 minutes, so after that quiz link will be shared. Chal Bhakti Charaswami Guru Maharaj ki. Jai.
Okay, now we go to question-answer session. Does anybody have any question? Yes, Dhananjay?
One devotee expressed yesterday that in the... It's about the different rasa with Krishna. And he said that we are experiencing rasa also with people in this world. And the way we indulge in those relationships in the case or truth base, what kind of relationship we cannot have with Krishna. Is it proper or make such a...
Yeah, there are five principal mellows, five principal rasa. Neutrality, servitorship, friendship, parental and conjugal. And when it comes to rendering devotional service, it is rendered in a mellow of servitorship. Jiveer Saruphai, Krishnaer Nittadas, eternal servant of Krishna. And then it is up to Krishna if he wants to put us in some other mellows. It is not up to us to say I will be in such and such mellow. The mood is servitorship. And to enter into Brajalila, one has to pursue the Ragannuga Bhakti. Ragannuga Bhakti means following one of the associates of Krishna in Vrindavan. Those who have spontaneous love for Krishna. So following those devotees who have spontaneous love for Krishna, we become qualified to develop that Ragannuga Bhakti or Premabhakti. And so here also, like we are serving, we have to serve one of the residents of Vrindavan. So there is no question of I want this mellow. When you approach Vrindavan, we approach in the mood of servitorship of Krishna's devotees. Like there is one anecdote in Gauri Samhita. Like a set of gopis approached Shrimati Radharani. Gopis means they are born in Vrindavan and they saw Radharani's special loving relationship with Krishna. So they asked Radhe, how do we get same sort of attachment for Krishna? How can we develop the kind of devotion that you have for Krishna? So Radharani said, you worship Tulsi Devi. So they were guided to worship Tulsi and Radharani gave the direction how to worship Tulsi. It's very nice also from the description we get to know how to actually serve Tulsi Maharani. So these gopis rendered service to Tulsi Maharani. And as a result of that, they got an opportunity to dance with Krishna in rasa dance. So the point is like, a devotee's attitude is always of service. Servitorship. We are all servants of Krishna. Then how Krishna wants to engage us, it's up to him. Or how Krishna's devotees of Vrindavan want to engage us, engage us, that's up to them. Like we should never think that I want to be in such and such mellow. I want to be in friendship. Today we may think that I want to be in friendship. Then tomorrow we will think, oh, friendship is not good enough. Parental is even better, so let me go to parental. No, parental is not good enough, conjugal is the one. So I want to be a devotee in conjugal mellow. I want to be a gopi of Vrindavan. No, not just ordinary gopi, I want to be Lalita or Vishak. Even Lalita and Vishak is not good enough, I want to be Radharani. So no, that is not spiritual. In this main point is, in the spiritual context, there is no room for thinking what I want. It is what Krishna wants, what Krishna wants out of me. How can I serve Krishna, how can I please Krishna? The I comes only in that context. Not I am the enjoyer, I am the controller. And in the script, you see time and time again, this advice is coming up. And give up this tendency that is generated out of false ego. False ego means generated out of this body consciousness. Give up that tendency, don't dwell in your body consciousness, become Krishna conscious. And when you become Krishna conscious, you won't have any awareness of this body. That is how we transcend our bodily platform and come to spiritual platform. Okay, Dhananjay? Okay. There was one before that, yes, Sarasati had a question before.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
One is like when we talk about spontaneous and organ service. But we see that there's also the gopis and they all are organized also in a certain way.
Go ahead.
So we see that everybody talks about spontaneous relational service. We see that in the gopis, when they serve Krishna, they all have their organization or they have their hierarchy or their... So could you...
Explain?
Explain how this relates perhaps to us also during we serve Krishna and we serve...
Good, very good point. Yeah. There are groups in Vrindavan. The groups of different gopis and different coward boys or gopas. Like say among the girls, it is called, these are called juthas. These groups are called jutha, jutha. And the leaders of the jutha, of the girls' group are called jutheshvari. Group leaders. And the leaders of the coward boys' group is called juthapati. Right? Like for example, Badarang has 12 principal gopas. 12 principal associates. Now they have their groups, then there is subgroup and so forth. Right? Similarly, Radharani's group, Chandravali's group. In Radharani's group, there are subgroups. Lalita's group, Vishak's group. And so Radharani has eight principal consorts, ashtrisakhis. They have their groups, then the subgroups and so forth, and they're the jutheshvaris. Now as you were saying, in our context here, yes, our juthapati is Shilpa Prabhupada. We all belong to Shilpa Prabhupada's group. And then there are subgroups. There are subgroups, it will happen naturally. And so that is how it is. Like whatever there is in spiritual world, it is here also, but we should actually develop it in a proper way. Developing in proper way means no guru groupism. There are groups, but that should not be, that shouldn't be developed with some mundane concept. My guru's group. Like yes, my guru's group can be there, but there, the groups are subordinate to Shilpa Prabhupada. And all the groups we have to be seen, we have to see, not just centered around the guru. That is the problem with the guru groupism. Only guru and Prabhupada is out of the picture. But if Prabhupada becomes the center of those groups, the leaders are leading their disciples and followers towards Shilpa Prabhupada, then that will be perfectly spiritual. Problem starts, my guru's group is the group. And there was, there was some propaganda going on. That our guru is the only guru in Iskun and no one else is qualified. You know, and what a damaging concept. So anyway, does it answer your question?
Perfectly.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have one more question.
Yeah.
Could you tell us what your vision is for women's vision? How?
Yeah. Well, there is many things, you know, like one of the first things that we started, I mean, we went there for is cow protection. Because I was thinking that, you know, our main business is actually cow protection. Go Brahmana Hitayacha. Namo Brahmana Devaya. Worshipping Krishna but protecting cows and Brahman, Brahmanical culture. Shilpa Prabhupada could not do it himself so much because his business was to establish Iskon. So he couldn't afford to get diverted. But this is our business. So now that Iskon has been established, we have to establish the culture of cow protection. And that's why I actually, last year I was the chairman of the GBC and I took it upon myself that I will give my full support to the Ministry of Cow Protection. And that's how actually we got involved in that. So that's how it started, you know, we got a piece of land and... And recently, just before I came, we had a convention in Deland organized by the Ministry of Cow Protection. And about 25 devotees came from different parts of America. A very wonderful, very productive, very fruitful convention. We are considering how to develop and many good results are coming. Like one consideration actually was to get about 600 acres of land in that area where the winter is not so severe and the cows can just graze. So where the dry cows had become a burden to the Goshalas actually in the west of the cold climate. So they can be brought to those areas and we are thinking of about a piece of 500 acres of land. And through that convention, we got 600 acres of land. So anyway, so that is the most principal concern. And there are various other things like we want to have, you know, seminars and retreats and... So therefore, one of the consideration is to build guest houses. And so we build the guest houses so that people those who are visiting, they can come and stay there. And we can also have conventions where we can at least, you know, accommodate 200 people with, you know, convention center and things. And so that is one of the projects that we are embarking into. Then organic farming. We have a large piece of land, it's important that you do organic farming. Because meaning depending on nature, not depending upon chemical fertilizers. You know, depend just on cow dung and other such fertilizers, manures. And one of the things that we actually started which is bringing in some income. All this while, you know, it was just spending and spending and spending, no income. But now we got some sort of income and that is by catering to the offices. The consideration was, why should the food distribution be only for poor people, homeless people? Right? Why should the rich people or affluent people be deprived of Krishna Prashad? Right? But they won't stand in a queue to take food stuff from us. So the idea is to cater to them in offices, serve them nice Prashad. So that's what we do, we started doing. We are actually supplying to just one company, one office. That is probably you know, Deloitte. It's a very, you know, multinational accounting firm. So Deloitte is actually... And you know, we are not officially supplying. We just got to know some people, we developed some, you know, in WhatsApp, we developed a group. We have now about 250 members in the Deloitte, from Deloitte only. And on a day in average, we are doing about 55 to 60 plates. So this is bringing in some income and it's just the beginning. Practically, this was the last, last month was the first time that we got it on a rather monthly basis. And the number is increasing, the demand for our food is increasing. And what we serve is, as Giti Kumar, he was telling, like, at least when it comes to food, I can say that I am an expert. You know why I am an expert? Because I love to eat. So I know what the taste should be like. So as Dina Krishna was saying, like the day before, I would go to the kitchen and kind of, you know, either prepare myself or show them what to cook and get the taste so that next day they can cook those items. And what they get is generally, mostly it is Indian, Indian cooking. And generally what they get is rice, but kind of fried rice or, you know, like different types of rice, not plain rice. Then chapati, chapatis. And then two sabjees. One is wet sabje, one is dry sabje. And practically every day they get paneer. One sabje is paneer sabje. And then they get something fried, either pakora, sometimes even serve them samosa. Sometimes we serve them dhahibada. And/or raita. And some sweets. The sweets are either gulab jamun or gajar halwa. Or halwa, Iskon halwa. But sometimes they serve some sort of sandesh, cashew barfi. And yeah, like...
Sounds delicious.
So you have to come and taste it. Thank you. Hari Krishna. Okay, Ratan, you have a question? Okay, Ratan, you have a question?
No, him.
Hi, this is Marit. It's amazing, it's actually Ratan, that the company is going very quickly, very fast. It should be serious, I'm interrupting. So Marit, all this issue we got some instructions, some advice, what we have to do. Like I said, every leader gives some lessons. Like I said, Putanav, who does, as a little thing she was doing, although anti-partition, she got liberation higher than liberation. So that is like a little service is being higher than liberation. So every, 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 all kinds of leaders who they are killing, Bakashura, Akashura, all these things has very special, so we are getting. My point is like when Gobhurana, when Krishna probably, like the address for the Indra Puja, he was part of it, but she was really is allowed. Also like the Rudmini, she was doing as an eternal associate of the Krishna. She was doing Durga Puja, Durga. So that is why it's been, it's been.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, demigod worship is okay, provided it is to get devotion to Krishna. The Gopis were worshiping Katayanie to, to develop their devotion to Krishna. Whereas Indra Puja was just to get some rain. The purpose of approaching the demigod was a mundane purpose, that's why Krishna forbade it. When it is, when you worship the demigods for getting Krishna's devotion to Krishna, that is fine. But worshiping demigod for Dhannam, Dhannam Jayi Dehi, Janam Dehi, that is not right. Okay?
Shiva Puja, Shiva.
Also to get devotion to Krishna. Yes.
Hare Krishna, Marit, thank you. Krishnas, I'm sorry, the class division that sharing Krishna consciousness is a feature, this connects Krishna, yes, and this Prabhupada also. But if you go back, how do you share Krishna consciousness? If you go back home to Krishna, how do you share Krishna consciousness?
There, being completely Krishna conscious. No other thought. Just Krishna and Krishna being, you see Krishna consciousness means being tuned into Krishna's consciousness. Right? What do you know, the consciousness is coming from Krishna. But the trouble is, instead of being tuned in properly to that consciousness, we develop body consciousness. The consciousness is projected to the body and flows through the senses. Result is desire to enjoy those sense objects. Right? So that is the anomaly. That is the defect, that's the problem. Our consciousness is not flowing properly, it's hindered. One example can be given. You are looking away from the sun. What will you see? Your own shadow. That is not sun, but that is darkness due to the absence of sun. Let's go on one example. Now, our material consciousness is something like that. We have become body conscious and therefore Krishna consciousness is hindered. Right? Therefore, the way is to turn towards Krishna. When you see the sun, when you face the sun, will you see any shadow? So that's what Krishna consciousness means. Now how to do that? It'll be nice if you can turn your face completely towards Krishna. But the problem is, you see, our tendency is to go this direction, through the body, through the senses. Therefore, the way is, Rishi Kena, Rishi Keisha, Sevanam, Vritiduchitthi. With the senses, you serve the Lord of the senses. With the senses, instead of trying to gratify the senses, you serve the Lord of the senses. Then what is happening? The consciousness is turning. And eventually it will turn completely towards Krishna. Thank you. Hare Krishna. Okay, so I'll, oh by the way, does, you want to say something? Yeah.
Hare Krishna. Generally, we hear that friendship is an exchange between two persons on the same platform. What does it mean when Pralat Maharaj speaks about that we should have friendship with Guru? We have friendship with Guru.
Yeah, friendship with Guru, I think I have to see in what context he said that. Yeah, Basandantam Gururhitam. Does it, did Prabhupada translate as friendship?
Yeah, the last line, Guru Sutritasauridham, Sauridham is friendship.
Guru, no, it's, last name is Gururhitam, not Sauridham.
Therefore, the line is.
Maybe I have to check that. So. Oh, you got it? Yeah, come. Damodar, will you translate? Yeah. Okay, go ahead. No, you just let him, let him complete the thing. He is looking at the verse. You got it?
Gramacha. Okay. Gramachari Gurukhude Vasantam Tuttugururhitam, Achcha Dasavam Neecham Gurusutritasauridham. Yes. In the words.
Okay.
Sauridham.
Yeah.
In friendship or in doing.
Yeah, but what is the total translation?
A student, Naravani said, a student should practice completely controlling his senses. He should be submissive and should have an attitude of further friendship for the spiritual master. With a great vow, the Pralat Maharaj should leave a guru who will only fulfill the benefit of the guru.
Yeah. Yeah, here Sauridham doesn't actually mean friendship as, or rather here the friendship actually means to be favorably situated to the Guru. Right? Saurhit. This word is coming from ridh, means one who is close to the heart. So that is how the Guru should be treated, you know, like very, very close to our heart. But prior to that, there is dasyam as a servant. Right? Okay. So Damodar, you can take this mic and give him that. You can take this one.
Hare Krishna. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the. Thank you for giving me the inspiration so that I can continue on this path. So my question is, Pralat Maharaj was born as the son of Iranya Kashipo and why is it that he took birth as a son of a demon? What is his background? Because Pralat Maharaj was a very big devotee.
Yeah.
Yeah, Pralat Maharaj's previous life, as you described in Hari Bhakti Las.
In the microphone? Pralat Maharaj's life is in Hari Bhakti Las, that's his previous life.
In his previous life, Pralat Maharaj, when he takes his girlfriend to a solitary place.
In his previous life, Pralat Maharaj meets his girlfriend to a solitary place.
And they go to a ruine. And they see that place and wanted to.
And they go to a ruine and they clean up that place and they want to take a picnic there.
Then they go to fight.
And then they start a war.
And he was so upset that he didn't eat.
And he was so wütant that he didn't eat anything.
And he was sick.
And he didn't sleep at all and he slept the whole night.
Now, the ruine happened to be an old temple of Nishin.
And this ruine was by chance an old ruine of Nishin Dev temples. And this day was Nishin Dev's birthday.
And because he passed away on that day in Siva Lake, he was especially busy on Nishin.
And because he didn't eat and didn't sleep on this day, he had a special heartwarming of Nishin Dev.
Because he was a listener, that is, a listener was in Nishin.
And through his heartwarming, he had a great brother of Nishin.
And because he went to that place, the intention of a pure, he was born.
But because he went to this place and his ambition wasn't in it, he had a birth in a family of demons.
Plan, yeah.
Is it clear?
Thank you. Hare Krishna. So this is the end of the program today. So tomorrow, this evening's program is the last one. And yesterday, there was a request that they wanted, they wanted to have question-answer session. And then we have a kind of an appreciation session. Like those who organize the program, contributed so nicely in cooking and taking care of so many areas of this program that we want to appreciate their service. So that will be this evening's program, this afternoon's program. Thank you very much, our glory is to Shiloprahapad.
Hare Krishna devotees, thank you everyone for patiently hearing lecture of Shilaguru Maharaj. So quiz link, we have posted in the chat box, devotees can attempt the quiz. And parallelly, we'll read today's quote by Shilaguru Maharaj. Today's, okay. Thirteenth January. Okay, um. Okay, we read yesterday's quote. Twelfth January. Srinath Bhagavatam is the auspicious and unalloyed narration about the Lord. Devotees relish to hear and chant these narrations again and again. The reception of the unadulterated verification of Krishna gives us the highest benefit of life by purifying our hearts of all the impurities and relieving us from all the material miseries. Srinath Bhagavatam, second Canto, eighth chapter, verse number three. Lecture delivered at Viniya, twelfth January nineteen eighty-seven. Thank you everyone. So devotees can attempt the quiz here again. Yes, again sending the quiz link to you all. Today in lecture, Guru Maharaj mentioned about Raganuka Bhakti and the mood for worshiping the demigods. And also very beautifully Guru Maharaj narrated the incidents or the projects of Deland, which Guru Maharaj started. So now I will share the screen of those devotees who are, who have attempted the quiz. Quiz has only eight questions, so devotees can attempt. So there are twenty-two participants in the quiz and it's, so let's see the, hmm, so Sitanandini, Devadasimath and Gaurav Prabhu, Anupama Mataji, Susharushaki Mataji, all four with hundred percent accuracy. Then we have Divya Dhamodar Prabhu with eighty-eight percent accuracy. Hari Bol seventy-five percent accuracy, Yambika Mataji, sixty-three percent accuracy. Arpita Paul Mataji with fifty percent accuracy. Suravi Mataji is still attempting the quiz. Aparajita Saki Mataji is still attempting the quiz. So we have twenty-three participants now. And Suri Mataji is leading here. Then Sitanandini, Anandini Mataji, Gaurav Prabhu and Anupama Mataji, and Susharushaki Mataji, all are having with hundred percent accuracy. Divya Dhamodar Prabhu and Hari Bol with eighty-eight percent accuracy. Shyantika Mataji, seventy-five percent accuracy. Arpita Paul Mataji with seventy-five percent accuracy. Devotees are still attempting the quiz. So, okay. Now we see there are six devotees, Suri Mataji, Sitanandini, Anandini Mataji, Gaurav Prabhu, Shyantika Mataji, Anupama Mataji, Susharushaki Mataji, all with hundred percent accuracy and with eighty-eight percent accuracy, Divya Dhamodar Prabhu, Arpita Paul Mataji, Hari Bol and Aparajita Saki Mataji. Okay? So. Thank you everyone for coming and relishing this beautiful necktarian session by Shilaguru Maharaj. Next Thursday also, we will hear from Guru Maharaj the same topic. We will continue the same series till then, devotees can, this quiz link will be active, so devotees can attempt again or those who have not attempted, they can attempt. Thank you everyone. Shilabhakti Charaswami Guru Maharaj ki jai. Jagat Guru Shilak Prabhupad ki.
you